...open with a quorum present. At this time, we will hear a public comment. Please let me remind you that because of restrictions by the Texas Open Meetings Act, board members may not engage in a verbal exchange about a subject that has not been posted. We will listen and we will take notes, but the board is prohibited from responding to any inquiries made during a board meeting on any topic not posted on the agenda. However, the board may reply with, one, a statement of specific factual information given in response to the inquiry; two, recitation of existing policy in response to the inquiry; or three, direct the person to visit with staff about the issue. While the board listens to concerns of a general nature, speakers should practice normal rules of decorum. Vulgar language and profanity will not be tolerated at this meeting as it is a public meeting and our students are watching today, or they could watch any day, as this is a part of recorded history. Additionally, disruptions of the meeting will not be tolerated because we're here to do the work of the children of Fort Worth ISD and our employees. We ask the audience to refrain from interrupting speakers while they present to the board during this portion of the meeting. And I ask you to consider that because everyone will have a turn at the podium, please give them their time to speak. Any employee, parent, or other member of the public is asked to comply with the appropriate grievance policy to have a complaint heard pursuant to the applicable board policy. Per board policy, BED local, to allow everyone the opportunity to speak this evening, no presentation may exceed one minute unless the speaker has prior approval for additional time because of the use of a translator. Speakers who require the assistance of a translator are permitted double the allotted time of speakers who do not require the assistance of a translator. Furthermore, a speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another speaker. I ask that you please preserve these rules for the purposes of effectively accomplishing the business of this meeting on behalf of the children of Fort Worth ISD in a timely manner. And our first speaker will be Priscilla Bowens, followed by Caitlin O'Connell Owens.
Is it on? Oh, okay, let me know when my time starts. Good evening. My name is Priscilla Bowens. I'm a doctor of veterinary medicine. I have a master's in public health and I'm a licensed Texas attorney. But I'm not here for those reasons tonight. I'm here as a concerned, passionate mother whose child attends a Fort Worth ISD school and is now being subjected to daily forced disease infection amid high community spread in Tarrant County. This is wrong, un-Christian-like, unconstitutional, and reeks of big government control, which I thought true Texans despise, and is potentially an abdication of power by local leaders because they seem to be confused on how to lead in the middle of a pandemic while my child is required by law to attend school for forced disease infection by maskless staff and students. Regarding the current litigation, please join the lawsuits like La Jolla ISD at all. Please do what you are supposed to do regarding the Traeger case. Stand and fight and appeal. Protect our children. This is public school, not parental choice school, right? We are in a public health pandemic, not a parental choice pandemic, right? You are an independent school district, not a Fort Worth big government. I am speaking. I am speaking.
Time. One minute, you're finished. I'm sorry. Next speaker. Thank you. Caitlin O'Connell Owens.
Evening. I'm the parent to three children, two, seven, and nine. Our oldest two are students in Fort Worth ISD. I'm asking the board to put in place a mask mandate at school, offer a virtual option for vulnerable students, and join litigation against Abbott. My healthy 34-year-old husband got COVID-19 and became an ICU patient at Harris early on. He survived, but has lasting effects to his heart as well as brain damage. Our three kids had varying degrees of sickness while I remained asymptomatic. Our seven-year-old was sick with daily fevers, pain, and exhaustion for six months and was later diagnosed with an autoimmune disease turned on by his COVID. COVID has deeply traumatized our family, left two members chronically ill, and while I understand that providing a virtual school option will result in a loss of funding, that loss is undoubtedly less tragic than the loss of our vulnerable children. We can't have school if our children are dead or incapacitated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a parent of a elementary student kindergartner, first time in Fort Worth ISD. Thank you, Dr. Scribner, for initially mandating a mask mandate last Tuesday, for listening to the experts in health. It was such a sense of relief, but then it was shattered on Friday when just four parents decided to sue the district. I'm here to ask you, the board, to do everything in your power to take legal action against Governor Abbott, just like countless school districts and nonprofit organizations have already done. Masks have become politicized when they should not be. We must protect our children that have not been given the opportunity to be vaccinated, especially those children that have health issues that make them high-risk. We are all capable of spreading the Delta variant. It does not matter if you have been vaccinated. That is why it is prudent we push for universal masking. I know you want to appease both sides of this debate. It's hard to upset parents, but there is one correct answer. The idea of "my choice, my body" does not apply here. Do we allow smoking in school? No, because it's detrimental to the smoker, but because it hurts others, that's why it is not allowed. When a personal action can hurt or kill others...
Thank you. Next speaker is Amma Paturs Deter, followed by Courtney White.
Ever since I have been a mother, my first responsibility has been to keep my children safe and to minimize risk from harm. I put them to sleep on their back when they were infants. I covered electric outlets. I bought safe car seats. I taught them to look left and right before crossing the street and to not accept candy for strangers. And most recently, I taught them to wear a face mask when in the middle of a pandemic. I used to trust that school was a safe place for my children, that my children were kept safe there too. That trust has now been broken, which is why my children have been absent from school for two days. The CDC's recommendations for K through 12 are based on the best available scientific evidence on how to control the spread of infectious disease. Governor Abbott's executive order is not evidence-based practice. Please do the right thing. Please vote to keep the mask mandate in place, and please keep fighting for it.
Courtney White will be followed by Mitchell Waverka.
Thank you, Dr. Scribner, for issuing a mask mandate last week. As a Fort Worth ISD educator and parent, I sincerely hope that all of the members of the school board will follow your example. Please vote to protect children by requiring all students and adults to wear masks in our buildings. Masks, however, are the least we can do. Fort Worth ISD needs to offer a virtual academy for medically vulnerable students, at least until a vaccine is available for children under 12. That being said, classroom teachers cannot be asked to teach both in-person and at-home learners as they were last year. This was both unsustainable and ineffective and set teachers and students up for failure. Instead, the district should use ESAR funds to pay for online-only teachers who can focus on providing high-quality virtual instruction and implement a transparent application process that provides equitable access across the district. Additionally, we need to reinstate the protocols that kept us safe last year: consistent social distancing, monitored wellness checks, robust contact tracing, and mandatory quarantining for all contacts. Masks are a start, but we're fighting over crumbs, and we have a successful recipe for safety. Let's use it. Thank you.
Mitchell Waverka will be followed by Ian Carden.
I'm vaccinated. You can see that I'm wearing a mask. I wear this mask because researchers and medical doctors have determined that it significantly reduces the chance that I could pass the virus to those around me, something that I can do even though I am vaccinated. I wear this mask because it's my responsibility as a member of a civil society to be considerate of those around me. I wear this mask so that you, all of you here in this room, know that I value your health and safety. This new mask does not protect me. It protects all of you. Grow up, people. Act like the adults that our children need and deserve, and please stop digging in your heels just because you don't like being told what to do or you find something uncomfortable,
I want everyone in this room to picture a classroom filled with children, especially your own. Without masks on, all it takes for every child in that room to be infected is for one person carrying the disease to be in that room for five minutes. The average class period is 45 minutes. In that situation, without masking, 16% of the children and teachers in that classroom will develop horrifying complications from that infection: drowning in their own lung fluid, multiple organ failure, brain tissue suffocating and dying. Many of those 16% will die, but not before suffering for days. Of the children in that classroom, 20% will develop long COVID. School's been in session for two days now. Children have been exposed for two days now. Can you really live with knowing that you held the power in your hands to stop it becoming three days? And you did nothing! Let's all be very clear here tonight. The consequence if the wrong decision is made is real death and real suffering. Your choice tonight is whether to save lives or end them.
Kika Funchol, followed by Shirley Freeman. Do we have Kika or Shirley?
Hello, everyone. I'm here, first of all, thank you, Dr. Scribner, for mandating masks last week. I am a Fort Worth ISD teacher, and I'm not here representing my school. Tonight, I'm representing myself and my daughter, who is a Lily B. Clayton student, fourth grade, and unfortunately, she could not even meet her teacher yet because I'm not sending her to school, because I don't think it's safe to send my daughter to school where masks are not mandated. I cannot count on other parents to have just used common sense. So, this is just the scientific evidence to use the masks. We are still in the middle of the pandemic, and the most vulnerable right now are the kids, the students K through 12. Please keep our kids safe.
Thank you. I'll call again for Shirley Freeman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, by the way, for wearing masks. It looks like 90% of you are wearing them. I sure do wish our classrooms could reflect that. My story is about a little boy, who's my son, Charlie. He has Down syndrome. I try very hard to include him. My lifetimes to include this boy. He's 11, and he's not vaccinated. He's had open-heart surgery. He's had Guillain-Barre syndrome. He's been in the NICU at Cook's more times than any of you will ever imagine. I would like a mask mandate in order for my son to go safely to his school that he's been going to since kindergarten. It's serious now. 2020 was hard, but we made it through. Now children are getting sick over and over again across the country. I think I read 1,900.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brianna Guerrero, followed by Mindia Whittier. Mindia Whittier, if you'd come forward, we'll wait on Brianna. Thank you.
Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 clearly states that a free and appropriate education must be made available to all qualified students with disabilities. In all cases, the individual educational needs of the child should be addressed in the least restrictive environment possible. For my child, who has an approved 504 plan, her least restrictive environment is in the classroom, and without a mask mandate during a pandemic, Fort Worth ISD cannot provide her safe access to her least restrictive environment. This is a federal violation. Under 504, a child may be placed in regular education classes with accommodations. Arguably, masks fall under the scope of accommodations which are required to provide children with disabilities, the free, appropriate, public education to which they are legally entitled. TEA's Students with Disabilities Planning Supports Guidebook says that COVID-19 pandemic has not changed the right to an LRE, so failure to implement a mask mandate puts you in noncompliance with Section 504 of the...
As a school-based speech-language pathologist, I understand the challenges of working when wearing a mask, but because I know that we need masks, I accept those challenges. I'm not going to insult your intelligence tonight with a bunch of statistics because I know we've all read them, we've all seen them, but I would like to share one story. Another SOP at another district recently shared her district had been in school for two weeks. During the two weeks, one of her campuses is entirely on quarantine. The other campus, four of the classrooms are shut down. I don't want that to happen here. Last week, you made the right decision by mandating masks. This week, I trust you'd also make the right decision. I have one comment to say to you: Stand your ground. Stand your ground. Stand your ground, because I know I am.
Max Crockmal will be followed by Dr. Kathleen Powderly.
Good evening, board. I want you to know that masks are the bare minimum. A mask mandate is the bare minimum you can do to keep our kids safe. It's not enough. It's a starting point. There's all kinds of practices that were in place last year that you've abandoned, and you need to put them back in. We need social distancing. We need robust contact tracing. We need staggered lunchtimes. We need controls on foot traffic. We need a testing regime even, like LA Unified School District is testing every student and staff person every week. We have ESAR funds. We can do this. At the very minimum, beyond a mask mandate, we need a virtual learning academy. There are ESAR funds for it. There are contractors who can provide it. They can provide teachers, and you can get it up and running within just a couple of weeks. It's time for you to take leadership and do everything in your human power to take care of our kids. None of us want to play these games. None of us want to play politics. This is your job. It's really not mine or anybody else here. Please do it. Take care of our kids and end this nonsense.
Dr. Kathleen Powderly will be followed by Celeste Holbrook.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kathleen Powderly, and my son, Thomas, is here with me. He is a senior at Paschal High School. I watched in horror at the May school board meeting as a mob took over the audience angry about vaccine advocacy and of a curriculum not even taught in Fort Worth ISD. To my vantage point, they seemingly tried to intimidate the board. I was equally as horrified this weekend as a pro-mask mob interrupted a school supply giveaway in COVID-19 vaccination clinic and seemingly tried to intimidate a member by going to their residence. As a parent and a community member, I apologize. You are humans, and you are parents. We must stop the mobs. We must stop the mob mentality and lawsuits and focus on what is going to get us out of this pandemic, and that is to vaccinate. To vaccinate and to vaccinate.
Thank you. Celeste Holbrook will be followed by Carol Guaneri.
I would like for you all to imagine that your daughter fell off her bike and her handlebar went into her stomach, and she's in the ER, and I would like for you to imagine that your doctor is treating you in the lobby because that's what they have to do because all of the ICU beds in all of North Texas are full of COVID patients, okay? Even if you have a bed, you do not have staffing and resources. I have a PhD in public health, and my husband is an ER doctor. He comes home weeping every night because he cannot make the choices that he needs. I am asking that you do what you can to fight this restraining order and institute a mandate that requires my two children to wear a mask so that your children have a hospital bed to go to when they need it for COVID or not.
Thank you. Carol Guaneri will be followed by Carrie English. And I'd like, before you start, this is starting to get... You're always the one that leads at the time when it gets noisy. Please respect the people that are on the podium. You'll find your time there too, but I ask that you take a breath and you respect the people that are on the podium. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carol Guaneri. I am the grandmother of two Fort Worth ISD children. Since the large majority of some feel like a mask is the know-all, end-all, do-all to stop the spread of COVID-19 and the Delta variant, those people who choose to wear the mask are protected. They think they are protected. Those of us who choose not to wear a mask should not be forced to do something that we don't believe in. It's plain and simple that there is no conclusive data as to the efficiency of face masks. I urge all of you at this table, please use your common sense. Thank you.
I'm a Fort Worth ISD parent and teacher. Have we really sunk so low as a society that people are unwilling to bear even the smallest inconvenience to save children from a potentially fatal disease whose long-term consequences are still completely unknown and which has already killed more Americans than the Civil War? Smoking in public was banned because cigarette smoke could fill up the room, and if your child was in there, prolonged exposure over a period of years could increase their odds of developing lung cancer someday. If your child is in a classroom with a maskless person with COVID, the sick person's breath is filling up the room with something that could put your child in the ICU in a few days, except that there's no room for them because last week, there were zero pediatric ICU beds left in all of North Texas. Forty-nine studies have shown that masks are effective, but let's imagine that they're wrong. If they're wrong and we wear masks, what did we lose? If masks are effective and we don't use them, what have we lost? Only our children.
Thank you. Lynn Craig, followed by Alex Force.
Hi. I'm a parent of two children in the district. I also teach writing and research to college students. I have an acronym that I use to help them evaluate sources for research papers. C equals currency. Is the information recent? R equals reliability. Does the source cite other sources? A equals author. Does the author know what they're talking about? And P equals point of view. Do you get it? Is there unnecessary bias? The court order that came through Friday rests in part on the plaintiff's supposed claims that irreparable harm is being done to children in Fort Worth because of the mask mandate. I have looked at some of the research that is cited by people with this view, and it doesn't meet currency, reliability, author, and point of view. Instead, I'm going to look at, and I'm going to help for y'all, a few sources that do meet those criteria according to university research standards. First, mask use could result in a large reduction in risk of infection. Second, we concluded that there was no adverse biological effects. In fact, there was some cognitive benefit to wearing masks. Third, can students wear masks all day, pre-K through kindergarten? Most of the day, they can. This is all peer-reviewed research.
Alex Force will be followed by Ernie Moran.
Sixty schools didn't show up to work because they were already in COVID quarantine. Some of them met parents and students in person last week at Meet the Teacher events, but quarantine alerts did not go out Monday eve... Did not go out until Monday evening. Why weren't we notified before school began? How can we trust you if you don't follow your own safety protocols on day one? Please automate school-wide alerts immediately when quarantines post to the district dashboard. Don't bird in school nurses and principals with notifications when you can do it for them. Vote for universal indoor masking, at least for schools where students are too young to be vaccinated. Vote for a virtual academy, at least for unvaccinated children with underlying health conditions like my daughter. Follow your calling, follow the science, and lead the way to safety.
Thank you. Ernie Moran will be followed by Suzanne Asfar.
I'm a Fort Worth ISD teacher appearing before you two days into the school year when most of us would rather be home recuperating, but I'm also the parent of an eight-year-old Fort Worth ISD student who cannot yet get vaccinated against COVID. So I'm here to ask you to summon the courage to do the right thing, whether politically expedient or not. When it comes to academic outcomes, you trust scholars who research and study. When it comes to athletics, you trust physios and coaches who have expertise. Why then would you not trust epidemiologists and pediatricians when it comes to a virus in children's health? If Governor Abbott signed an executive order that the school day needed to be 15 hours long, would you throw up your hands and say, "Oh, well," and have students arrive at 6:00 a.m. and go home at 9:00 p.m.? If the Texas Education Agency said that football helmets were not required when I would affective and thus unnecessary for playing, would you say, "Well, they won't fund us. We make the kids wear them," and tell Fort Worth ISD coaches to scrap them? Why then are you not listening urgently to the dire message coming from our health experts? As we sit here right now, there are no available staff pediatric ICU beds anywhere in North Texas. Zero. Please vote to mandate masks and offer virtual option in our schools immediately until it is no longer deemed necessary by experts who know, rather than politicians who want to be reelected.
Suzanne Asfar will be followed by Shirley Freeman.
I'm a first grader who is deaf. She's a child who relies on lip reading and facial expressions. I struggled and put up with her wearing a mask and doing virtual learning last year. It's not inconvenient. It's borderline abuse and probably illegal. Yes, FAP, least restrictive environment. I know there are parents with autoimmune compromised kids out there who feel the opposite. And look, we're all here just trying to do the best for our kids. We are. Y'all talk about equity. Right now, equity means choice. Parents choosing what is best for their unique, individual child. There has to be room for people to opt out of masks. If we learn anything from a year ago with the back-to-school issue that it's parents have the right to choose what is best for their child, not the district, not teachers, not other parents, it comes down to respecting that right, like you had planned to do before the superintendent took matters into his own hands once again.
Thank you. Wallace Bridges, followed by Byron Griffith, or Brian Griffith, I'm sorry.
I'm Byron, by the way, so just to be clear. In a lawsuit last week against the Fort Worth WISD, pediatrician Dr. Ferella claimed that reported studies do not justify the use of masks to prevent the transmission of COVID. I'm here to tell you, as a PhD in biochemistry, that Dr. Priscilla's statement is not an accurate assessment of the scientific studies reported for several reasons. Dr. Priscilla neglected to state that one of the key papers she cited was retracted by the authors due to several insufficiencies in the way it was performed. Another of the key studies that she cited, in that study, the authors freely acknowledged that their study was not sufficiently powered to support a strong conclusion. Most importantly, Dr. Priscilla cherry-picked all the reports that were consistent with her statement and ignored the mountain of data available that's inconsistent with her statement. An accurate assessment is that overall, the data supports the use of masks as a mitigation for the spread of COVID. I support the mask mandate, and I have provided all of this information and the documents to support it to my board member, Ms. Martinez, and I thank you for my time.
Thank you. Shirley Freeman. Shirley Freeman. Lynette Ibera, followed by John Pilly.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Freeman. I'm a mother of three children, two of whom attend Fort Worth ISD. As a nurse, I've been on the front lines battling COVID since the beginning. I have watched people die without their loved ones by their sides. This virus is devastating. We should not have to make a person wear their mask, however, they are not doing it. So this is where it's caused the board needs to mandate this so that our children do not be getting sick, passing this virus on from one to another. I wish that y'all would make everybody wear these masks to school every day. Unfortunately, I have withdrawn one of my children out of school because of how the masks are not there, and all of my kids can be getting this virus. I thank you guys.
Thank you. Lynette Ibera, John Pilly. Michael Shed.
Thank you. As you step into executive session to discuss your legal options regarding mask mandates, I trust you will make sure your decisions you make are in keeping with your overall mission to provide a quality education to the students of Fort Worth ISD. We must focus on students staying on campus, focus on students who are underperforming in math, focus on students who are underperforming in reading, and spend less time masking the truth about this low-performing district. Spend less time making excuses for the mass exodus of students from this district, and spend less time making excuses as to why this district continues to be rated a C. Wherever you stand on mandatory masks, or however your discussions in executive session go today, your vote should be centered on achieving high expectations for improvement of reading and math scores, but you should also be holding this leadership team accountable to meet those high outcomes regardless of how you move forward on these masks. Will this superintendent and his leadership team be held accountable by this board for the continued failures of this district? Will these debates over masks be an excuse at the end of the year?
Thank you. Jenny Crossland, Angel Martinez.
Good evening, Board Superintendent. I'm here tonight because I started a petition for Superintendent Scribner to step down. He broke the law. He broke the law when Governor Abbott said no mask mandates. And I personally, it offends me. I have two small children in preschool. I'm concerned that the children in this district aren't learning, as I mentioned the last time I spoke at a board meeting. And instead of addressing that, you're addressing something that you legally can't do. I also brought the Constitution of the United States of America. It's one of the best documents ever written, and I just think it's really important maybe to just read like a line of it. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to oursel..."
Thank you. Thank you. Angel Martinez, followed by Robert Baker.
Good evening. I'm here tonight because I'm against this illegal mask mandate. As we know, there is a recent ruling, five to four, against the mask mandate. And what I have with me here is those official masks that you all advocate for. Says 98% bacterial filtration efficiency. But let's look at the third line right here. Warning: This mask is not a respirator. This mask does not eliminate the risk of contracting any disease or infection. Replaces if damaged or soiled with blood or other bodily fluids. So there's other people here that have been making these emotional arguments and everything, and these like gaslighting arguments as well.
Thank you. Robert Baker will be followed by Malik Austin.
That's Robert Bueker.
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It got misstrued. The Ninth Amendment says the enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights should not be construed to deny or disbarge others retained by the people. In April the 14th, according to the Cook Children's Center, we don't want to talk about that, that's too much. The Joy Campaign launched on Tuesday with a series of stories on checkup newsrooms over the next six weeks. Joy stands for Just Breathe, Open Up, You Matter. The stories will explore how the pandemic and isolation have affected kids, the rollover to the counter medications plays in youth suicide attempts, social media, and the unique challenges faced by minorities, including the LGBTQ community, as to how suicides affects parentings. A record of 43 patients were admitted to Cook's Children Medical Center in March after attempting suicide. According to hospital system last year, Cook Children's recorded seven suicide deaths, marking the first time suicide was the leading cause of trauma and deaths of the hospital surpassing...
Thank you.
I'm more concerned about the students than the 76104. You know who I'm talking to, and 119. Look, just, Mr. Superintendent, just last Friday, in San Antonio, Fourth Circuit of Appeals ruled with the district, we need, Mr. Lawyer, I need you to file the same TRO that San Antonio did. Mr. Abbott has warped the Texas, 1975 Texas disaster mandate. That is to help, anything to help the public, that's what needs to happen and protect the citizens of the community, of the state of Texas. That's just how it works. Hey, the court appeals have ruled, and we need y'all to file the same thing. And these 76104 and 76119 got the highest cases in the county. So I ask that you vote the right way and do the right thing and file this injunction against the governor with this, in place this TRO in effect. It's already been ruled. Thank you.
Thank you. David Fruchet will be followed by Bonnie Fontana.
Hello, local leaders, and everyone here is a local leader. My name is David Lafayette Fruchet. I got my PhD from Southwestern Seminary. It's here locally. My kids have been in Fort Worth ISD for five years. I have two children in wheelchairs, and Fort Worth ISD is not always the easiest old buildings to get around, but we make do. My daughter's immunocompromised. She needs her classmates to wear a mask, and I'd like that for just four weeks, the next four weeks. She's yet to be at the school. I'd like our local leaders require masks for four weeks, and in three weeks, reconsider a short extension. My daughter needs you to help her stay safe. You're our local leaders. I don't believe that in Fort Worth, we want big government decisions, big mandates coming from Washington or from Austin. Local leaders who we see at our events, who we see at our parties, you all are leaders, and what you decide, we can go with that. Four weeks, then reconsider. Stop keeping us out of the loop. Let's do it.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm the parent of a second grader at Fort Worth ISD. And first, I wanted to thank the board for mandating masks this school year. It was the right thing to do. We all know that masks, along with social distancing, vaccines, and contact tracing works, and we know this because it worked so well last year. In fact, it worked so well that I was able to send my daughter, who had been distance learning, back to school in person for the spring semester, and that was the best thing for her and for her classmates, too. So I think we should all be proud of that as a community. And I'm here to just ask you to keep fighting to get the mask mandate back in place. Do everything that you need to do to keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Elena Greer will be followed by Elise Greer.
I just want to say that I appreciate the impossible position that politics has put the board in. But the very most important thing, the very most important issue is the health and the lives, and secondarily, the education of our children. These are just a few headlines from other school districts that have not implemented mask mandates in just this last week. Arkansas Mask Quarantine Offers Grim Warning To School Systems Without Mask Mandates. This state is one of a handful of blocked school districts from mandating the use of masks. Within days of reopening, hundreds were quarantined. 5,000-plus Hillsborough County students in Tampa, Florida, in quarantine-isolation. Emergency meeting called tomorrow. COVID outbreaks in three rural Texas communities force school districts to close their doors. COVID outbreak forces Coast Elementary School to close for 14 days. Classes began last week. A class in Eastern Kentucky School District closes due to COVID cases. Talbot County District shuts down within a week of opening due to COVID-19.
Thank you. Elise Greer. Elise Greer will be followed by Andrea Palmer.
Hi, I'm Elise Greer, a student here at FWISD. Last year, I wasn't able to go to school and eat lunch with friends. I wasn't able to just have fun. I couldn't do this because a new disease was spreading throughout the world and killing so, so many people. I watched as it spread to Texas. I watched as it, as I saw the first case in Dallas, and I watched as it came here to Fort Worth. I was scared, and I wasn't the only one. So many people lost their loved ones or their very lives, and the battle is still ongoing. Masks are not a guarantee, but they can at least help us with COVID-19, and that's why we need this mask mandate. Because I want to stay at my high school. I want to do so much, but I will not be able to do this if I am not safe. I don't want to lose any more time, and I don't want to forfeit any more time with each other. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm not an attorney. I have zero grounds to comment on the legal ins and outs of the current situation the school board is in. I am, however, a physician who has served as an expert witness, and I am familiar with the concept of negligence. As a mother of two Fort Worth ISD students, what I would like you to consider is that the potential liability you may incur if a child in Fort Worth ISD gets sick due to exposure at school and has to get hospitalized or heaven forbid dies like the healthy 12-year-old boy from Houston did this week. Negligence is a failure to use reasonable care resulting in damage or injury to another. Asking a student to wear a mask in the height of a pandemic with our most transmissible and virulent strain of the virus widely circulating in our community certainly seems like reasonable care to me. Defying the governor's politically motivated dangerous ban on mask mandates has a clear penalty, but what unknown penalty for your negligence to follow clear-cut CDC and AAP guidelines are you willing to...
Thank you. Mario Rodriguez, followed by Tiffany Keach.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the Fort Worth ISD, all of y'all, for your service that you do for us. My name's Mario Rodriguez. You probably see me as a brown voice since skin color is so important to you and some of the crowd who think I'm a sellout. My brain helps me make decisions, not my skin color. It's my choice, my family's choice. CRT and masks are distractions. I'm asking the school board to get back to the real issue plaguing the FWISD, the poor performance. An average-rated school district has schools that are rated at a D and F level. Fort Worth ISD needs to change leadership and relieve the superintendent. Kids are not...
Thank you. Ms. Keach will be followed by Dr. Fred Beerbaum.
Sort of throwing my notes away here, listening to all this. It's so troubling what's going on here. The bad news is ordinary cloth masks don't save lives. We're not talking about N95 masks for our kids. We're talking about ordinary cloth masks. The science is out there. You can see it on the CDC website, buried underneath the blanket of pro-mask messaging. Mask mandates don't lead to better outcomes. Governor Abbott lifted the mandate in March, and despite doomsayers, our death rate dropped by more than 90% in three months. We don't need another mandate. It wouldn't be useful, and the negative results would harm our community. It leads to anger and conflict, citizens policing each other, making outrageous accusations and treating each other with disrespect on both sides. We must be allowed to choose. If it's that dangerous for kids to be in school, then we need to explore other options, virtual learning and other options that are available to...
Thank you. Dr. Beerbaum will be followed by Nikki Lanza.
I'm a physician who practices pathology and laboratory medicine in a local hospital in Fort Worth. I've also served on the Infection Control Prevention Committee in my hospital for the past six years. I have a sister who's a pediatrician and three children in the Fort Worth ISD, two of which are elementary school age. I'm very concerned about the current iteration of COVID-19. This is not the same virus that we were dealing with just six months ago. It's changed. It's more transmissible. There is a potential that it is more virulent for children. It's potentially more harmful for children. And that's, and we're learning more information about this, but my sister has attested to this, that there is a greater number of children that she's seen that are hospitalized that need ventilators that are requiring more care than they need. Every day when I go to the hospital, the ER is filled with patients, and we are making room, we're adjusting, but resources in a hospital are like a balloon, and that balloon is about to burst. We need to do what we can do as a community to stem the tide of COVID-19 for our children and in...
Thank you. In an effort for consistency, Mr. Bond, can you be the sole timekeeper? You're able to do it, right, sir? Okay, let's let him do his job. Go ahead.
I'm the parent of two Fort Worth ISD students too young to get vaccinated. Their biological father, my first husband, died in 2018, and while he didn't live long enough to see COVID, we did live through seeing him on a ventilator. I don't enjoy playing the widow card, but if my story can help anyone else avoid the trauma that hospitals, illness, ventilators, and watching your loved ones suffer and die can cause, then I will speak out about it. No person in this room, and especially no child, deserves to lose a loved one or their own life, especially due to something preventable. For nearly four years, my children and I have dealt with post-traumatic stress disorder and all of the social and emotional fallouts that come along with that, and I don't wish medical trauma or loss of a loved one due to a serious illness on anyone, even those who disagree about the safety of masks. We need masks. We need a virtual option for students, and we need to protect even those that don't think they need...
Thank you. Jesse Henry, followed by Megan Carter. Jesse Henry, Megan Carter.
I want to thank the superintendent for stepping up last week, last Friday, the mandate. Give them an A+ on that. Always, my kids being virtual for the last year and a half... Always, with my kids being virtual for the last year and a half, I want my kids to be in person. I felt good when he came out with the decision last Friday. He, he came back, they went back on the road and made it, took, took, took the mask out. I just want to say, get either mandate or give a kid's option of being virtual, period. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a doctoral-prepared nurse executive, and I've been on the front line of this pandemic from the beginning. More importantly, I am a parent of a middle schooler too young to qualify for vaccination, and I had hope last week that he would be kept safe, but legal battles have derailed that hope. Please listen to the 125 pediatricians at Cook Children's. Do not risk our children because of four misinformed non-experts. We are out of beds for all children who need ICU care. That means if your child has a traumatic accident tomorrow, there's no readily available ICU bed for them in all of DFW. This is very real. The parents who state their concern for their children's psychological health due to masking have never seen a child struggle to breathe on a ventilator. This is not a debate anymore. We can prevent unnecessary harm. Please save these children and require the masks.
Thank you. Christopher Gallegos, followed by Kristi Cantu-Wilson.
Good evening. When the board goes to discuss a course of action in response to GA38, remember these things. Fort Worth ISD, in the last week, has taught our children that if you're scared enough, you can pick and choose which laws or regulations or Supreme Court orders you want to follow. You can, like Superintendent Scribner, tell the world, and I quote, "that he cannot mandate the wearing of masks one day and the next unilaterally try and mandate them anyways." Secondly, our nation and by extension, our state, were built to secure individual rights, in this case parental rights. The very concept of individual rights demands that they be protected even when and especially when the consensus of the given day seeks to erode them. It is much a right to have your child wear a mask as it is mine. As a parent, to decline on behalf of my child. I'm a father of five. I support mask choice, parental rights, and for what it's worth, hand hygiene.
Thank you.
Hi, I've been in healthcare for over 30 years, so I have a little bit of background, but I just want you all to know that we're sympathetic for everybody's fear, but we shouldn't let fear control everything we do and everything in our lives. Masks are not treatment. Masks are, treatment is available for this disease, and I don't know that, most of the media won't let us know about it because it's hidden, but there is treatment, and I can give you resources, I have copies of flyers that shows treatment is available. We shouldn't live in fear, we should know there's treatment for this disease, and when we take action and we let each other have a choice, then we can actually empower ourselves to engage and share the treatment options. They're real, they're available. I personally have prescribed the treatments, and they're safe, effective, and some of them are over the counter, many of them are. So I encourage you all to not think you're more powerful than the governor, the Texas Supreme Court, and the U, the Tarrant County District Court. You're not more powerful, Ken Scribner.
Thank you. Sheri Myers, Tiffany Rivia. Deanna Deardorf.
Hello again. I'm a mom and stepmom to five children in the Fort Worth ISD district. Something that we are in short supply of these days is compassion. I am asking for your compassion. I'm asking for everyone in this room to have a little bit more compassion. I have two children who are not able to be vaccinated, one of whom has underlying health conditions. They were unable to attend their first days of school. Our three older children have been going to school and coming home these past two days in tears. Mom, I tried to do this at lunch. Mom, I tried to be super careful because they are terrified of bringing something back home. I am, we are not living in fear, just have some compassion. You guys have excellent legal attorneys, there are legal avenues, and I am begging...
Thank you. Mary Catherine Nolan, Norma Garcia Lopez.
Hello, my name is Mary Catherine Nolan. I'm a taxpayer and concerned citizen prepared to commit financial lease to this lawsuit against the school district. I am one of over 300 supporters who have come together in the last 24 hours to fight this mandate, and our numbers are growing. Parents can choose to mask their children. It's your right. I support you in that. If masks work, those children are protected, they're good. But what choice do parents have who feel wearing dirty masks all day are unhealthy, harmful to their children's social, social and mental well-being? Where is their protection? Where is their choice? Why are you superseding parents' rights? This morning, city council struck down the mask mandate proposal, leaving the decision, leaving the decision to mask or not to, not to mask to each individual. So why is the school board now acting unilaterally against the governor?
Thank you. Norma? Following Norma Garcia Lopez will be Cassandra Setzer and Meredith Bowman.
Good evening. I'm Norma, and I'm not going to tell you anything that you already know about me, but I would like to thank the physicians that have come up here to talk about their expertise. These people that have been rude to the experts, they're pathetic, okay? I work for a healthcare system, and one of our hospitals is a children's hospitals, and... You shut up, okay?
Okay, everybody, okay, let's, let's just stop for a second, Norma. Okay, I'm sorry, that's one and done over there, officer? I don't know.
Well, I will never understand how grown adults like some of these back here don't care about protecting children. People have politicized and whined about individual freedom. When did a healthcare crisis become political? Nothing has been taken away from you, but life can be taken away when we fail to protect and prevent harm to others. We have lost a sense of respect for humanity. People have died, people are dying. If we can't do the right thing to help others, not even the simplest thing, to wear a mask to protect...
Thank you. Cassandra Setzer, followed by Meredith Bowman, followed by Amanda Coleman.
I have a PhD in biomedical sciences and was relieved to hear last week that the board initiated a mask mandate in time to send my kindergartner to her first day of school, and then was very afraid for her when it was blocked. Children under 12, like my daughter, are ineligible for the vaccine, and masks are our best chance of keeping them safe. While I understand that many may believe that masks can harm students' mental health by having them wear masks, having to shut down a class or school because someone tests positive for COVID is a far greater risk to their mental health and social and emotional development. My kindergartner has told me that her class of 14 students, she was usually the only one wearing a mask, she is really good about wearing it because she sees me and her dad wear them. But that is not enough. Cloth masks protect other people from you more than you from them. We tout STEM education, yet we are not willing to listen to science. When Governor Abbott's original executive order came down, the COVID landscape was entirely different. We must adjust to new data so we may keep all of our kids safe.
Thank you. Meredith Bowman, followed by Amanda Coleman.
Good evening. I am a Fort Worth ISD parent, and I am also a Fort Worth ISD teacher. I would like for you to imagine a classroom full of children in the morning with masks on, and at the end of the day, wearing the same masks. I would like for you to tell me how you think the same masks from the morning are keeping anyone safe from catching any illnesses, including mental illnesses, throughout the day. This is also about emotional care as well. I love seeing my students' smiles, and I know that they love to see my smile. I have had the best last two days, being the first days of school, getting to see those children smile. It should be a choice, it's not the only option that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda.
I would like to call for the termination of our superintendent. He, his recent action to unilaterally violate not only a parent's right to decide what's best for their children's health, but he violated the law by going against the governor's order, virtually giving our governor the finger. During the recent hearing about the mask mandate, when Fort Worth ISD's unmasked attorney was asked why our superintendent didn't challenge the governor's first mandate requiring masks, he said because he liked that one. Do we really want the captain of our ship to be someone who only follows the laws he likes? What kind of a message does that send to our children? The opposition is vocal, fierce, and full of malice, causing only division and hate in the district. To not uphold the law, however, is to invite this type of chaos to reign. What kind of a leader do you want leading the district? Is superintendent a leader who upholds the law, or does he bring division and chaos to the district? These are the questions I hope you're asking in light of all this happening in our...
Thank you. Joe Palmer. Joe Palmer, followed by Gloria Mendoza.
After listening to the hearing last week, I decided to come down here and ask you not to spend valuable, limited resources on an unwinnable war. The governor's mandate has the force of law. If you want to change the law, I'm with you. However, I will ask you what the Tarrant County judge asked your army of attorneys that the families in this district are having to pay for. Why did you not take legal action before going outside the law, Dr. Scribner? But I agree with those who are opposed to mandates from the governor. You might agree with me that a unitary executive deciding for 30 million people is far removed from democracy, but I am also not for one person deciding for 80,000. I'm asking for a public vote at tonight's meeting to reverse the superintendent's decision to go outside the law. It is true that four days ago, the Court of Appeals did side with San Antonio, but two days ago, the Supreme Court granted a stay, a stay of that. You may think this is good, you may think this is heroic, but it is against the law, it is foolish, and it will cost us, and you will lose and we will lose.
Thank you.
TSA's elementary called my sister today, asking why my nine-year-old niece had not attended school. So my sister had to explain to them that my nine-year-old niece has health problems, that she has a three-month-old baby that had to live her first two months at Cook's Children due to a complicated pregnancy. Our mother has thyroid problems, and my sister has diabetes. Everyone in my household is immunocompromised, and I'm sure that's the case for many other families in the district. We need a virtual option. My sister asked TSA Sims what safety protocols they were putting in place to ensure not only my niece's safety, but the safety of my entire family. They had no answer for her. What would it look like if you called every parent in the district to ask about their fears and concerns and actually listened to them instead of letting one racist clown and the Fox News cult decide the fate over students and families?
Thank you. Sheri Myers. Followed by Arch Mayfield.
Given the lack of cooperation here, I agree that we do need a virtual option. We just don't have the community response to this pandemic that we need. There are 1,383 new cases in Tarrant County today, and Texas has requested five mortuary trucks. Dead people do not have a choice. Texas attorneys must adhere to Rules 4.01, Truthfulness in Statements, and Rule 4.04, Respect for the Rights of Third-Party Persons. In the Trager lawsuit, did all the evidence pertain to the Delta variant, or were we misled with information about a prior variant that was less dangerous? The judge expressed his opinion early on, making me wonder about our right to impartial justice. He let one side speak virtually uninterrupted while frequently interrupting the other side. At the end, he asked a question to the Fwizd attorney but would not let him answer. Thus, I don't feel both sides were allowed to be fully represented.
Thank you. Arch Mayfield. Followed by Brian Goolsbee, followed by Heather Goolsbee.
I'm speaking as the concerned husband of a current Fort Worth ISD substitute teacher. As all of you know, on any given morning during the school year, Fort Worth ISD is best desperate for good substitute teachers. On the first day of school, according to the district dashboard, 120 school personnel were out with COVID or COVID-related issues such as quarantine. That's beside teacher absences due to other illnesses, family emergencies, and additional issues that call for substitutes, and call they do. My wife can stay as busy subbing as her schedule and stamina will allow. She would be here tonight, except she has to be at Arlington Heights early tomorrow morning. What we are facing in Fort Worth is about much more than personal responsibility. The lack of a strong district-wide mask policy creates inconsistent protocol across the system and worsens an already dangerous situation for the subs who could be at three different campuses on three consecutive days. I believe the school board can and must act creatively and decisively in the interest of public health.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for hearing us. The CDC is recommending that all people, vaccinated or not, wear masks in public indoor settings in areas of high or substantial transmission, and believe that the schools count as that. I have two juniors at Arlington Heights High School. There is a brand-new building that was just opened this year. It currently has no air conditioning in it. I'm pretty sure that that counts as poor ventilation. There's no soap in any of the bathrooms in that new building either. There is no social distancing, even at three feet. Disks, I'm sorry, desks are paired up in many of the classrooms. My daughters inquire when they have them standing next to each other, shoulder to shoulder, to sing. It's imperative that we all have, that all students and staff wear masks and that we have a virtual option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Heather Goolsbee, followed by Mindy White, followed by Erin Carroll.
Good evening. I'm a mother of four, and I have been a parent in Fort Worth ISD for 20 years. You have all the information you need to make a wise and responsible decision. Please do so. Being a leader in youth ministry for almost 15 years, my heart and soul are with all parents. Sorry. We cannot miss this opportunity, not only to protect our children and our community, but also teach our children what it looks like to pull together and take care of one another, especially the most vulnerable among us. I implore you to be the leaders we need. Make a plan, be transparent with us, tell us what the plan is, that's what we need. Make good choices. I can't believe we're here again, but I can't help but wonder if we continued with our masking and we continued with all the precautions we took before, that we wouldn't be here. We really have to think about that. I also am so ashamed and appalled of the behavior I've seen tonight. We need to do better for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mindy White will be followed by Erin Carroll.
Good evening. Per CDC FOIA, Freedom of Information Act, response given April 5, 2021. Does the CDC have a randomized controlled trial proving that cloth face covering stopped the spread of virus? Does the CDC have a randomized controlled trial that two masks stopped the spread of virus or COVID-19? The CDC's subject matter experts... cloth face coverings are effective against COVID-19. They did go on to say that there is some experimental data about blocking particles. So I sent, in the spring, a question to a Fort Worth ISD administrator. I never heard a response. I had two questions. So in light of the CDC information, the Freedom of Information Act, could someone share with me the data or the research being used to justify the masking? My second question was, could someone explain to--
Thank you.
Am I ready to go?
You're ready to go.
All right. I am the parent of a six-year-old who goes to Benbrook Elementary, and on the second day today, I'm already getting an email saying that there's a positive COVID case in a staff member. Her teacher is not wearing a mask. People are not wearing masks around these vulnerable children, and it is enough. They cannot get vaccinated. They cannot speak for themselves, so we have to speak for them as parents. My child wears a mask all day long and has no problems. She wants to keep her community safe. My mother is going through radiation and chemo. I cannot bring this home. If this comes home, it is the end of the world for my family. I am imploring you, please, protect our children. You are the ones that can do it. Don't listen to us. Listen to science. Science is what you need to follow. Doctors, people have told you this is dangerous for our children. Please do your job and protect them. Thank you.
Thank you. Barton Scott, who will be followed by Alexander Montalvo.
Good evening. My name is Barton Scott. I'm a Fort Worth ISD teacher, and I really come tonight in support of Ms. Jackson, our board president. And the main thing I'm really here to say is that, you know, I don't know a single trustee up here that doesn't care about kids, but there should be certain things that are out of bounds. And so when you have protests at a drive intended to vaccinate children, that should be out of bounds. When you go to a trustee's home and protest, that should be out of bounds. I'm all for everything to protect kids. If you need me to teach virtual school, I'm telling you, I'll put in the hours to do it. I'll come in on a Saturday to help kids. I don't care. But what I want people to realize is that Dr. Scribner's home should be off limits. If you want to speak here, great. If you want to file a lawsuit and fight for your rights there, but the words and actions that we have matter, and these kids matter.
Thank you. Alexander Montalvo will be followed by Virginia Collins.
Thank you, Superintendent, for last week, for making the choice that needed to be made to help protect students. I'm asking for the board, including President Toby Jackson, to follow that lead and let us keep kids safe as much as possible by implementing solutions that will help slow the spread of this Delta variant. We have heard from experts around the impacts. We need you to lead and be bold. Texas is being forced to react to this COVID surge, whether we like it or not. Texas has deployed 2,500 out-of-state workers to help overloaded hospitals. Texas has requested five refrigerated moratorium trailers from the federal government in anticipation and influx of deaths. Three Texas school districts closed due to COVID spread, and even Governor Abbott is forced to quarantine after testing positive for COVID. We need to take the steps to prevent tragedy, not react to it. Please do your--
Thank you. Virginia Collins, followed by Buddy Hartman.
Good evening. First of all, I asked for an interpreter. I was denied. Okay. So I'm a parent with the Fort Worth ISD, and two students in the Fort Worth ISD, and I also represent Lulag District 21 Youth. So I am here requesting that the school does mandate the mask mandate. We have situations, as someone had mentioned, if we weren't-- if I was in here smoking a cigarette, everybody would be offended. If a situation is-- another thing is, if I didn't have my kids in seat belts, I would get a ticket, if they were injured or not, if I was pulled over. We need to-- we have a fiduciary duty to make sure our children are safe, and we need to understand that danger is foreseeable and death, and we also need to give parents a choice for virtual option. I did request for an interpreter because I have Spanish speakers, and I did ask for that, and I was denied.
Thank you. Buddy Hartman. And our final speaker after Buddy Hartman will be Brianna Guerrero.
Good evening. My name is Buddy Hartman. I have a lot of grandchildren in Fort Worth ISD. I have one daughter that teaches in Fort Worth ISD, and I don't know that-- I'm not prepared for this speech, but I don't think too many of you are listening very, very hard. Some are playing on your telephones, and I don't know what difference it's going to make about this decision with masks. But I do know I have some studies I want to turn in. I have 32 studies that-- about the ineffectiveness of masks and 47 studies about their problems with wearing them. Small children are wearing masks, a lot of bacterial problems. But I do want to address Dr. Scribner, and his record is atrocious, and I'd like to call for his resignation tonight. Thank you. Thank you.
President Jackson, board. I'm not going to stand here and trauma dump to let you feel empathy for me and my community because I represent District 8. We need a mask mandate. This is the bare minimal that we can do. If you're not going to offer virtual learning, because we know you have the resources, the same way you shut down Rosemont Elementary to make room for Rosemont 6th Grade, I'm pretty sure you can do the same for virtual learning, having a space where virtual teachers can come and talk to their students who are fear-- who fear to send their kids to school. Like, that's the least you can do. Que te cuesta? What does it cost you to be decent human beings? To put our kids first. That's your motto, right? Put your kids first. Put our kids first. Thank you. Thank you. The time is now 7:19 PM. The date is Tuesday, August 17, 2021. We will now recess and reconvene for executive session as authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code under Sections 551, 071, 24, and 6. Thank you all for being here. a quorum present, recessed and reconvened open session. We adjourned regular session, convened executive session, adjourned executive session, and now reconvened open session at 9:45 PM with a quorum present. We'll move on to number four on the agenda, which are action agenda items. Let's move to action agenda item A, that is to consider and approve action to appropriately respond to matters related to litigation discussed in closed session concerning Executive Order GA 38. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Moved by trustee Ramos. Do I have a second? Second by trustee Luabinos.
I think I should read the motion first.
Yes, that'd be good.
Thank you, President Jackson. I move to join the La Jolla ISD ETAL and Shanitra Miles Fowler ETAL versus Abbott lawsuit into Travis County.
Thank you. Motion is made by trustee Ramos, seconded by trustee Luabinos. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Brickins, we'll start with you.
Due to my appointment with the state of Texas, I will have to abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Anyone else have any discussion? Trustee Ramos?
I do. Thank you, President Jackson. Just want to add to the reason for the motion for me. It's a nice statement. My personal beliefs and thoughts is this is my window to be able to express those. It's my belief that if this board would have voted on this and, you know, been in contempt, that if we'd have had an opportunity to do that, I would have voted and would have been completely okay to be in contempt. Our history is absolutely riddled with bad laws and some that, in my opinion, still stand, such as like Senate Bill 4, where people that look like me can still be stereotyped and profiled. I really genuinely appreciate legal counsel, appreciate my colleagues for the dialogue. I also want to state that my belief is that even if the board would have had a chance to vote on this versus the superintendent doing the mask mandate, we still would have had a similar outcome. And then I want to really genuinely thank Dr. Scribner for your leadership. Moving on behalf of what I truly believe is your best interest for our children, we as a board, not only historically, but even the current one, believes in brave, in bold leadership, and I want to, as a single-member trustee, I want to thank you for having done that for us. So those are my thoughts for tonight, and I yield the floor back to you, President Jackson.
Thank you, trustee Ramos. Trustee Ann Dar.
Trustee Evans is before me. Or was it me?
I think you pushed it first.
Okay, sorry.
Trustee Dar, it goes from the bottom up.
Okay.
It's learning at 9:45.
That makes a lot of sense. Thank you, trustee Jackson. I too would like to thank Dr. Scribner for doing what he could do within the legal limits of the law to protect the students and the staff of Fort Worth ISD, as well as the greater community. That did take bold leadership, and we know, I know, where you stand on the importance of safety and health in our schools. So thank you very much for that. There are very few things that I actually hate, and one of them is masks. I hate masks. But more than I hate masks, I hate sick kids. I hate kids missing school because they're not well. I hate diseases and germs that they might take back into their home that can compromise the health of their family and therefore compromise the health of our greater community. As a parent, there are many laws that govern what I can and cannot do far beyond the realm of schools. There are laws that determine how I can discipline my children, how I must transport them in a car, whether they are a baby or a toddler or under 13 years of age. There are laws that determine that my child must be educated. As a parent and as a citizen of Texas and of the United States, I must follow those laws. So the fact that I'm a parent of my child and I expect to have choice over everything that happens, the law does not permit that. There are laws I must follow as a parent. I have raised two kids. I am raising a third child. When my children are sick, I consult a doctor. I don't reach out to a legislator. I don't reach out to a politician. I don't go to an auto mechanic and ask them how I should treat my child because they are sick. I reach out to a doctor because I trust doctors and I recognize that they have four, eight, sometimes 12 or 16 years of education, that they have-- they know more than I know when it comes to keeping my children healthy and safe and growing the way that they should be growing. So why, as a trustee, would I-- as a parent, would I ignore the pleas of the medical community to mandate masks? Why would our elected officials ignore these same pleas of our medical community? I don't know. I can't answer that question. But I choose to listen to the medical community. Speaking of the medical community, I would like to say thank you. A heartfelt thank you. It sounds trite. They are two simple words. You are overworked. You are underappreciated. You are undervalued, but I need you to know that I thank you. I see you. I hear you, and I recognize that you are concerned and you have taken an oath to first do no harm. I recognize that you have the public health and safety of children at the forefront of what you do every day, and thank you for doing that. Texas is a go-big-or-go-home state, so I would like to congratulate Texas because we are winning and we have the highest number of pediatric COVID cases in the entire United States. So we're number one. Congratulations to Texas on that front. And finally, as a trustee sitting in this seat, this is a representative government. And if I am representing the people and the families in Fort Worth ISD, then it would be my duty to support, if given the opportunity, a mask mandate. Because for every one email that I received in favor of pro-choice, I received 17 emails pleading that we implement a mask mandate. Let me repeat that. For every one email that I received saying, "No mask mandate, please let us choose," I received 17 emails pleading for masks. So as a representative of District 6, it would be my duty to support a mask mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. This issue is layered, nuanced, and difficult. It sounds like the decision in the La Jolla lawsuit will affect us whether we are plaintiffs or interveners, so I'm going to be voting no on this motion. I want to steward our resources to focus on what's happening in Tarrant County. We will most likely have the Texas Supreme Court's decision in the La Jolla case within three to four weeks. Those current and ongoing legal proceedings around the state are going to be sorted-- are going to sort out the issue, and while that is happening, I ask that administration bring us a plan to offer virtual instruction for our families and students who request it.
Thank you, trustee Evans. Trustee Ramos?
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, I listened to two of my colleagues so far. I can't help but just say that I'm feeling handcuffed right now. I've always said that I didn't necessarily like the politics involved in school board business, but this is, as some of my closest colleagues would recognize, this is straight politricks. And when I say it's straight politricks, it's that I, as a single-member trustee, also I agree with you, trustee Dar, I would absolutely love to have an opportunity, to have that a tool at my disposal, being that the majority of us are parents and have children in this district. We're not politicians. Now, we're engaging in the political process, but we're having a politrick now, and we're having to make a decision to join a lawsuit or not, which I'm completely in favor of. And the resources that are going to be used by our families and our communities, I would push back on to say that those families in our community that we know the statistics of low socioeconomic, our children of color, our undocumented kids that are not going to have those privileges and opportunities-- to have those privileges and opportunities, those are real lives. Those are real human beings that we are being charged with, and I'm not really particularly okay with not having an opportunity to be able to have a say so in that. So while I appreciate the dialogue of our colleagues, I'm also a big advocate for, we don't need artificial harmony, not looking for unanimous votes, just looking for individual trustees from single member districts that represent parts of our community and were supposed to represent the values of our community. For me, as one, I'm not confused as to what the values of my community are on this. And my final piece to that is, I absolutely love that people in Northside and Diamond Hill emailed me. This is the first time I've gotten this many emails, including people on my block, which is pretty powerful, because what I'm witnessing is an awakening of people in my community that are paying attention to their local politics, which also means that they're going to be paying attention to their local elections, and that doesn't bother me one bit. That actually gets me really, really excited. So I want to give a shout out to those families and the community that have reached out of all, of all the different perspectives on it, but the ones that have impacted me the most have been the ones from students that have taken the time to email me saying that, please, take care of us. You have the power and the ability to do something, to make a decision. And I have to go back to them in the community and say, I actually didn't have the power and the opportunity to do anything about it because my local control, my ability to do that, has already been stripped.
Thank you, trustee Ramos. Trustee Roxanne Martinez.
I first want to thank you, Dr. Scribner, for your bold leadership in last weekend enacting that mask mandate. I echo what our other trustees have said here tonight. For me personally, I'm currently appalled that the law is not protecting our children and is prohibiting us from protecting our children, but this is not over. I know that moving forward, the district will work to do all we can legally to ensure the safety of our children. And I know, as a trustee, I was elected to do what's best for all children in the district. I will continue to fight to do that, and will advocate for our district to do all that we can to protect our children and families. As many of you know, I've been out there in the community trying to help our communities reduce the spread, and I know that the situation is dire. I'm deeply, deeply concerned about what will happen in the coming weeks. Make no mistake, parents, that we need to mask up our children and keep our kids and families safe. And I just want you to know, I'm not giving up on the ability to mandate masks. I would 100% support it when we're able to do so and support doing all that we can to keep kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Martinez. Trustee Quentin Phillips.
Thank you, President Jackson. Trustee Dar, I appreciate your comments earlier. And I appreciate you talking about what you hate because it definitely helped me to figure out what I hate, and I hate that we've gotten here. I hate that we have politicized a public health crisis with people's lives in danger. I hate that. Wearing a mask is not 100% effective against getting COVID-19. Hand sanitizers tell you that they're 95, 98% effective. The vaccine, when they rolled them out, said the efficacy of particular ones are from 80-something percent to 95%. There is no 100% to any of it. Social distancing is not 100% effective. Standing behind plexiglass is not 100% effective. But all of these are tools coming together to lessen the likelihood of a child going to an ICU. It doesn't mean that anybody's not going to get it. It's not meaning that if you wear a mask, all of a sudden you're safe in COVID, you have nothing to worry about. But have we got to a point where it's political whether or not we feel like we're going to do everything within our power to keep a child safe at school? And that's where we have gotten to. You're the bad guy or you're the good guy, depending on what side that you're falling on in this, when isn't the side just the fact that this is a public health crisis and people are dying? That has gotten so lost in this, and all I'm trying to do, and I know I make it, I know to make our statement, but I know I speak for my colleagues on the board when I say, all we try to do is keep kids safe. That's what we're trying to do when we're making these decisions. What's best for our young people in the schools? I am sending two sons into these buildings. I am sending nieces and nephews into these buildings across the district. I am sending neighbors and cousins and friends into these districts, and I promised them, and I still promise them, that I would do everything to fight for their safety, everything to fight for their education. That's why I'm, thank you, Dr. Scribner, for taking leadership and saying, you know what? Fort Worth ISD, we're going to mandate masks. That's what you said. And in my estimation, whether I'm right or wrong, or whatever that makes me look like politically, I feel like that was the best thing to keep people safe, not just even the young people. These educators that are going in this building every day are not robots. They are husbands. They are wives. They are sons and daughters. They are mothers and fathers, aunts, uncles. They're community members. We are not sending robots into buildings every day. So it behooves us to do everything possible to keep these people safe because they had trusted that to us when they said, I elect you. And we did that. And then the legal process wants to tell us, we can't do that to keep people safe. So hell, yeah, I'm voting to join a lawsuit. I'll do whatever I got to do and any way I can do it to make sure that folks know, employees, students, community members, I care about your humanity. I want you alive. I don't care about all this other stuff. It's not political for me, not in the least bit. COVID has hit my family in ways that I can't even imagine. Family, friends, my brother, spouse, everything, it's been hitting my family, and yet I'm just going to say, oh, well, just go into the building, we'll be okay. We'll see what happens. That's not cool. That's not cool with me. It's not about a friend, you know, anybody else is right. It's about implementing what's best for everyone. That's all I've been trying to do. I know so many of my colleagues, it's all you've been trying to do. And I hate, trustee Dar, along with you, that this is where we are now. So whatever lawsuit we got to join, join it. Whatever measure we got to put in place, do it, because ultimately, I want these human beings to be able to go home to their families and not affect their households and to be able to live lives. I want our young people to be able to go to university and to get technical trades and to make a life for themselves, and if they're getting sick in our buildings because we're not doing our job to do everything we can to keep them safe, that is on, that is on us as a society, not let alone just us nine and 10 in here. That's on us as a society that we can't get it through our minds that this is a public health crisis and we are talking about human beings. Thank you for the opportunity, President Jackson. Now you.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Trustee Dar.
I apologize.
Sorry. I apologize for not mentioning this when I first made my comments because I agree with trustee Phillips. We have got to do everything we can and use all of the tools that are afforded us to keep kids safe. The courts have stripped away some important tools that this governing body has to use. Therefore, I would like to request a report on virtual learning for the August 24th board meeting, which is one week from today, please.
Thank you, trustee Dar.
Thank you, President Jackson. I also support this effort to give our district every tool available to protect our kids, my kid. Few people know that early this year, I contracted COVID-19. As it spread out to family members, a few in my family became sick, and I was hit hard. And no one knows this, but I spent 11 days in the hospital with hours away from being intubated. My oxygen levels improved enough that my, they postponed the order for intubation. I made a small task difficult, and I found myself short of breath after reaching for a toothbrush and performing a small everyday task. Within a few weeks, I was negative for the virus, so I know the seriousness of this illness. And masking in crowded classrooms is simply common sense. If it keeps one person from the experience I and my family endured early this year, it's well worth it. So I, that's why I would like to use, to join this fight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Luabinos. Trustee Phillips.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you very much for that, trustee Luabinos, particularly that transparency in your life, man. I appreciate those words. And I just wanted to also just add in, much to trustee Martinez's sentiments, you know, legally, we've been told we cannot mandate masks. So I will use the phraseology, I strongly encourage young people in my community, family members, please put your mask on. I'm strongly encouraging you. Please tell your young people about social distancing. Please tell them to sanitize. Please tell them to wash their hands frequently. Please, employees, you will not face any retaliation if you do not decide to wear a mask because we cannot mandate. I want to make sure my words are clear, but employees, it would make me feel so great inside if you would put a mask on. I would feel very good about that if you would choose to do so because I know our families in our community would feel really good about sending their kids to school where people were choosing to do so. Thank you, President Jackson.
Thank you. Trustee Brickens.
We all know that in-person learning is the best way for our students to learn, and I know that there are a lot of parents out there that are afraid to send their students to school. Just know that we will be doing everything that we can legally possible to make sure we are doing what we can to make our campuses a safe learning environment, and that includes revisiting the virtual learning. And I know that's, it's been a really hot topic with a lot of our parents because they're, they're really scared about sending their kids to school, but I think we have a consensus on that with the whole board, that this is something that we really need to do because, you know, whether they send them or not, we want to make sure that they're still learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Protecting and educating kids in all respects has remained my focus and the focus of this board, not politics. The Fort Worth ISD Board of Education has remained focused on making the best decisions possible to safeguard our employees, parents, and children. The COVID pandemic has disrupted every aspect of education in our district, and I want to thank our employees because you're still making it happen for our kids. Just when we believed that we had an effective plan to return to normalcy, the more transmissible Delta variant has arrived with Lambda right on its heels, and it's ripped through communities. Some communities in East Fort Worth, where I'm blessed to represent, have a vaccine hesitancy rate of 24%. That's where we can do work. Let's get people vaccinated. Our district administration decided, based upon the best available science, the advice of the Centers for Disease Control, the American Academy of Pediatric Physicians, and that of our local physicians, even those that are members of Tarrant County Medical Society, to enact a mask mandate on our campuses. The Board of Education last week supported that decision. Some individuals opposed to this decision sought and received a temporary restraining order in a Tarrant County District Court late on last Friday, the Friday before we began school the following Monday. This court put on hold the original decision by the administration to enact a mask mandate for our schools. Immediately, 1,000 opinions and suggestions flowed from concerned parents and community members. Our next actions had to be guided by legal counsel, not by raw emotion, however well-intentioned. I requested that our considerable legal resources, staff attorneys, and outside counsel begin to formulate options and strategies for our administration and for this Board of Education. I requested a conference call with attorneys once they had reviewed our legal position. That conference call meeting between me, the Fort Worth ISD team led by Dr. Scribner, and the board attorneys was scheduled for the following day at midday on Saturday. Earlier that day, I attended a previously scheduled annual school supply distribution and free COVID-19 vaccine event that I'd helped organize with nonprofits and community stakeholders in the heart of southeast Fort Worth. Participants were somewhat surprised when a group of vehicles drove by the event, honking and yelling about the need for Fort Worth ISD's board to enact a mask mandate. Despite this minor scene, the event was successful at getting more folks to receive their COVID vaccines, where I will remind you that over 24% of the community does not want to be vaccinated at this time, whether that's for fear or other reasons. We also were successful at giving children school supplies where we know there are opportunity gaps and supply gaps where kids can't get school supplies. Once the event was over, I went home for my conference call with legal counsel on the mask mandate issue now before a Tarrant County District Court. In the middle of my conference call, the same protesters arrived in front of my home where they placed signs and stuffed animals on my yard. This protest at my home was unsettling to my family and pets. The irony was, of course, that this protest in favor of a mask mandate interrupted the very conference call addressing our legal options regarding a mask mandate to help protect each of our students, our employees, and their families. And I might remind you that this district, when you look at how much impact we have, it's about a third of this community. Of course, I and all of my colleagues appreciate the concerns expressed by these protesters and of the many parents, educators, and district staff regarding the need to follow the best advice of our medical professionals regarding masks and other common sense protective measures. We're also mindful of the effect of our decisions on the mental wellness of each individual involved. On the advice of legal counsel, we moved to plan tonight's special meeting where we've learned the tools are not readily available. But this board has worked together tonight to determine what tools we have at our fingertips, and we will use them tonight. I want to thank the many people who have offered their heartfelt opinions on this issue, certainly as one that arouses passions and deep concerns, and that's okay because it's about our children. Rest assured, however, I, and I believe this board, will continue to make careful and deliberate decisions, decisions that are in the best interest of the health and safety of our students, staff, and teachers. We'll put threats and politics aside and exercise our best judgment to do as right for our children, our employees, their parents, and every taxpayer that supports us. Thank you for allowing me to share what led up to this evening, and on that, we will move to voting. Motion's on the floor from trustee Ramos, seconded by trustee Luabinos. Do you want to reread the motion, trustee Ramos, just for clarity? Or are we okay?
Yes, let me pull it up from legal counsel.
You're good.
So it was I move to join the La Jolla ISD and Shanitra Miles Fowler versus Abbott lawsuit in Travis County.
Trustees, please move to voting. And the motion passes with six yes, one abstain, and two noes. And on that, we'll adjourn.